Regular meeting, April 16th and now in session, please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clark will call the roll, please.
Alderman Duyan.
Here.
Garika.
Here.
Halloran.
Here.
Johnson.
Present.
Lewis.
Here.
Moranti.
Here.
Nisan.
Here.
Rosenbaum.
Here.
Sarar.
Here.
Volo.
Here.
Presenty Pedro.
Here.
Born present.
Can I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the March 19th meeting and place them on file? I have an introduction and second. Shoshah and Dewan. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Can I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the city treasurer's report as of March 31st and place it on file? Can I have a introduction? Calvin and a second. Dewan. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You oppose? The motion carries. May I have a motion and second to place committee reports on file? Introduction. Shoshah. Eileen, second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. We have a number of communications. The first was, as we read last week's meeting, was from the American Legion post inviting us to the Memorial Day Remembrance ceremonies to be held on Monday, May 27th. The second is on your desk now, was a petition submitted to the mayor and the common council pertaining to the recent real real property reevaluation assessment project. You have complete copies of that on your desk. And lastly, is an invitation to all council members to attend the celebration of Hudson Fire Department 225th anniversary, which will be held tomorrow at noon on the front hall, the front steps of City Hall. May I have a motion to accept these communications and place them on file? An introduction, please. Rob, a second. Dewan. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Okay, out to business. The first piece of business is to pay the bills. Any questions? From the council.
Yes, the rosary flowers, how does that go?
True.
Memorial Day committee, the flowers up at the cemetery.
If there are no other questions, may I have a motion and a second, an introduction and a second to pay the bills? Shoshah and Tiffany. A roll call vote, please.
Alderman Duyan.
Aye.
Garika.
Aye.
Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presenty Pedro.
No vote. The next order of business resolution is appointing commissioners of deeds in for the city of Hudson. You have the list of names. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Duyan.
Aye.
Garika.
Aye.
Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presenty Pedro.
No vote.
Carry.
The next resolution is approving the firefighting listing pursuant to the service award program. For those who weren't here at our informal meeting, this is just certifying who qualifies for the service award program, which is very small.
Pension.
Pension, thank you. Pension medical for the fire. A roll call vote, please.
Alderman Duyan.
Aye.
Garika.
Aye.
Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presenty Pedro.
No vote.
Carry.
The next resolution is entering into an agreement with the New York State Department of Transportation for maintenance maintenance of the Empire State Trail. This long document commits the city to maintaining the trail, which shouldn't be too much of an expense since the state pays for the trail and the establishment of the trail. I believe there'll be some mowing involved and maybe some line painting, but not much else. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
I have two questions. So, the definition of the work is actually signage from Route 9 through Allen Front, Knoll Street, Dougway, Harry Howard. Is this consistent state signage doing that?
Yes, they'll be providing signage.
All right, and then under number nine, it says municipality agrees to inspect and furnish written acceptance of the trail work within 15 days, referring to the actual signage, which is the maintenance. Who does that, DPW to confirm that?
I would think so, yes. Any other questions? Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Duyan.
Aye.
Garika.
Aye.
Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis. Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presenty Pedro.
No vote.
Carry.
The next resolution adopts the climate smart community pledge, which we discussed at our informal meeting. If there are any other questions? Yes.
I would like, I guess, I would like to add to number 11 to the resolution of planting trees. I guess I have to make an amendment for that request. I do have to vote on that.
I think it might be included in what we have here already, but.
It may or may not be, but I had this request coming from my constituents.
Oh, okay, okay. So, how do you want to phrase that?
Of planting trees.
Can I have an introduction and second to amend the resolution? Tiffany, Shoshah. Voice vote, all in favor of amending the resolution, say by, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The amendment is approved, so we can go back to the resolution itself and a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Duyan.
Aye.
Garika.
Aye.
Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presenty Pedro.
No vote.
Carry.
The next resolution authorizes the sale of real property located at 4271 Street in public auction to the highest bidder. This is a reboot of our effort to sell the old police building with fewer restrictions than the last time as well. Any questions before we have a roll call vote? From the council. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Duyan.
Aye.
Garika.
Aye.
Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presenty Pedro.
No vote.
Carry.
This next resolution authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for the installation of three electric charging, car charging stations. Was there a question? That's Tiffany.
I just wanted to ask Alderman Volo, with this resolution, would the city profit from this?
The city will be charging $1.75 per hour to charge the car, if you want to charge your car there. There is a baseline maintenance fee and anything beyond that, yes, the city will bring in those funds. So, we discussed this with the treasurer and yes.
Thank you.
Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Duyan.
Aye.
Garika.
Aye.
Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presenty Pedro.
No vote.
Carry.
The next resolution. Oh. Did we take up sexual harassment? Oh. We're pulling the resolution that was next in order for adopting New York State sexual harassment policy for the city of Hudson. Not because we're opposed to such policy, but because, well, I don't know where it is.
We had incomplete, thank you, we had incomplete information concerning the policies that it would be most beneficial to adopt. The, what will come before you in a month is a much broader policy that touches on all of the suspected classes of potential harassment or discrimination, not just sexual, age, disability, and group others. We've had better advice and we will proceed with that and you'll see that next month. Thank you for the delay and I apologize for the fact that this was brought before you now, but it will be with you next month.
Thank you. Back to the resolutions. The next resolution is accepting a donation, a donation on behalf of the Hudson Fire Department. It's a check from the Hudson New York manager, Morel Littleley, Inc., in the amount of $100. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Duyan.
Aye.
Garika.
Aye.
Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presenty Pedro.
No vote.
Carry.
The next resolution authorizes a budget amendment to finalize and the CHIPS appropriation. It's just really a number of fund changes, expenses and revenue. It's all sort of a wash. It isn't, not sort of a wash, it is actually revenue and expense. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Duyan.
Aye.
Garika.
Aye.
Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presenty Pedro.
No vote.
Carry.
And lastly, the old resolution is just paying a bill from 2018 for funding a telephone cable internet for the senior center upstairs. A roll call vote, please. Yes, sorry.
It says the 2019 budget amendment. At least the copy I have says that.
I'm sorry, the 2017 budget was recent, thank you, the 2018. A roll call vote, please.
Alderman Duyan.
Aye.
Garika.
Aye.
Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presenty Pedro.
No vote.
Carry.
Okay. These are the new resolutions. First off, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute full-service community school memorandum of understanding for the benefit of the youth department. Are there any questions from the council? Kamal, do you want to speak to this?
Sure, it's basically, it hires someone to work in the school district and the youth center to handle like the socio-emotional issues that our youth have, so they'll be usually helping out with the full program or connecting youth to different resources like mental health or different things like that. So, they'll just be like a helping hand and they're based in the school district. They're the fiscal sponsor of the grant.
They'll be working with individuals or groups?
Yeah, with individuals. I believe Lilac was the last worker on there.
And this is a grant?
Yeah. It's a grant.
So, Kamal, so this school is funding it?
Yes, the city would be a partner, so there's many partners from this neighborhood, there's a bunch of different partners on the grant. And that's like one of the main points of the grant is to have various partnerships in the community.
And is it, will it be a youth department employee or a school district employee?
I'm not sure, I believe that they're a school district employee and they'll be assigned to help out.
Oh, I see.
Because the city school district is the fiscal sponsor.
And this came out of you?
Yes.
Would they, would they give the city any type of like reports or feedback since we're going to partner with them? I'm sure we can ask. Definitely would be something I would want to look into.
The full program is described in the attached document?
Yeah.
A roll call vote, please. I'm sorry, it's new, it's a grant.
Thank you.
Can I have an introduction and a second, please? John and Calvin. Now, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Duyan.
Aye.
Garika. Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presenty Pedro.
We're going to skip the next one and save it for the end because that's how you build suspense. And go over a couple of others first, shorter ones. This is a resolution authorizing the mayor to issue a request for proposal for insurance brokerage services. This was approved at finance tonight, Rob, would you like to describe it pretty quickly?
Sure, so there's two types of insurance programs, there's the benefits program, that's actually handled through the treasurer's office, and then there's the commercial program that's handled through the mayor's office. So, the commercial programs, kind of the buildings, the commercial autos, the slip and fall. So, what the mayor is looking to do is to actually RFP the policies out to see if we have the most compatible policies at the most affordable charges and that were actually insured correctly.
For beginners, RFP means request for proposals, just in case you didn't know what that meant. Can I have an introduction and a second?
Introduce.
Kamal. A roll call vote, please.
Alderman Duyan.
Aye.
Garika.
Aye.
Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presenty Pedro. Carry.
The next resolution authorizes a loan from the general fund to the green innovation grant program. Basically, this is, we got a grant for $248,000. The general treasurer will execute a loan from the general fund, which will of course be paid back at some point in time. And this too was approved by the finance committee. Let's see. Can I have an introduction and a second? Eileen and Rob, can I have a roll call vote, please?
I'll have a copy.
Taking a mic.
Alderman Duyan.
Aye.
Garika. Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presenty Pedro.
No vote.
Carry.
Next resolution authorizes the mayor to execute contract for services related to the feasibility to study acquisition and use of the John L. Edwards School for City Municipal Offices. I brought as a show and tell, you can access this feasibility proposal online. It proposed architect, was selected out of eight proposals. Any other questions from the council? Can I have an introduction and a second, please? Shoshah. Kamal. A roll call vote, please.
Alderman Duyan.
Aye.
Garika. I'm sorry.
Aye.
Halloran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presenty Pedro.
No vote. Now, the resolution you've all been waiting for. This resolution was generated by the public and many of those involved would rather not be identified for the simple reason they fear retribution by either GARR or the B A R in the future. It's a complex resolution. I'll begin by allowing, the council gets to comment first and then we'll open up to the public, I guess. But the rule, it is our formal meeting, so we need very strict boundaries in how much we're going to allow to be said. But barring that, I'm sorry, I already said it's going to be the council first. I'm sorry, well, you'll get a chance, you know.
I just wanted to, is it online?
Oh, yeah, it's definitely online.
Okay.
Definitely. Go to the city of Hudson website, common council, under agenda, you'll find it listed. Let's start with the council.
I have two questions, so does this get sponsored by somebody on the council or does it get introduced without a?
Well, that's what we, I mean, if you want to, that'll be the first thing we do is, you know, like any other resolution, we'll have an introduction and a second if that happens. I thought we talked about it, should you want to introduce it first?
No, 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 I'm sorry, that's not what I'm saying. So, normally, all the other resolutions we've had are brought forward by somebody? So, is there somebody at tax, I realize what you said about people don't want to be identified, but is somebody on the council?
I, I used my own authority to put this forward tonight.
Okay. And my second question is.
Doesn't mean though that it's introduced or seconded yet.
No, no, I understand, no, I fully understand. And my second question is, was this vetted by the city attorney and is there any opinion on it?
Yes, it's, we'll get to that. Andy has looked at it. He's, it's gone through a number of revisions already. Andy, would you like to speak to the resolution?
Sure, there's been at least two versions which I've seen and this was sent to me over the weekend. I took a look at it, did some research. Specifically, the concern I have to be spent that the resolution states resolution authorizing the mayor to reject the preliminary assessment rolls submitted by GARR based on the reevaluation. The concern I had with that is I did some research. Opinions have been issued by the New York State Department of Taxation and Finance, their council, which applies on a variety of issues involving not only real property taxation, but other aspects of taxation in the state. And there was a case that was particularly on point regarding our local legislative body seeking to set aside an assessment role and reinstate a prior assessment role. And, you know, pursuant to that opinion, which I did share with Tom, you know, it basically specifically said that the town, in this instance, the legislative body was a town board, but it said that the legislative body had no authority to substitute its judgment for that of the assessor. And the exclusive remedy available to a property owner who considers himself agreed by reason of any assessment made by the assessor is that which is provided in Articles 5 and 7 of the Real Property Tax Law. And what this opinion goes on to explain is that specifically in Section 2, Article 16 of the New York State Constitution, the legislature has specifically taken authority over real property assessment and taxation in the state. It's set forth in Real Property Tax Law, Section 500, and the provisions contained within it. And, you know, in the absence of them, you know, giving that up pursuant to the constitution, the opinion was that, you know, not only does the mayor not have the authority, but the legislative body doesn't have the authority to come in and say, end the role or return the role. So, the concern I have, I know there's been some revisions, but as I understand it, the most recent one I have been provided begins with authorizing the mayor to reject the preliminary assessment role and I don't believe he has the authority to do that.
So, but in the case of, if we're saying that the services that they're providing are inadequate to the contract then unresponsive, I mean, I've gotten emails from my constituents that they're rather unresponsive and not cooperative per the terms of their contract with the city.
So, I would recommend an amendment to this resolution that we eliminate that section of the opening and just go to resolution authorizing the mayor to terminate the city's contract with GARR. Take out that part that we can't do anyway.
Okay.
But that's up to you.
Well, I agree that that's the only issue.
Would you like to put forward that amendment?
Can I have a question?
Oh, sure.
Andy, but if we put that in there, don't we have to prove in, you know, that the contract was breached? Or are we opening ourselves up for liability here in legal terms? Because if we do this without evidence of a breach, because we have, you know, X amount of, you know, people saying one thing and some people saying no, nothing, so where's the evidence for a breach?
Yeah, you know, what I would say on that, there'd be a few things that we would want to look at. One would be the scope of services that are left to be provided under the contract. Go ahead. That's number one. Number two would be the issue of, you know, what specific allegations do we have of X or emissions on part of GARR? I honestly don't want to talk about that publicly to the extent the council is considering litigation. It wouldn't be in your interest to do that. Certainly, that would be something, you know, threatened or potential litigation would be something that would be discussed in executive session to get off the back so that we don't jeopardize our position vis a vis that sort of stance. And then certainly, as part of that analysis would be, you know, what if any potential damages could endure to the city as a result of, you know, terminating and bringing action? But that will go hand in hand with the amount of services left to be provided.
So, would this resolution be premature then, without, you know, what you're saying in terms of the executive session? You know, would it be premature?
Well, I mean, it's certainly something to, for the council to weigh and to exercise their discretion. One of the, one of the other concerns I have is right at the end is it talks about, you know, rejecting the evaluations that were provided. Again, that's, that's not something that's within the province of this council. And just, just to be clear, because John brings up a really good point. The case in hand that I, that I shared with Tom, the underlying facts were this. A reevaluation firm was retained by the town to assist the assessor in completing the reevaluation of all real property within the town and such work was to be completed on or before a specified date. The work was not completed until 11 months later. The town was so dissatisfied with the performance of the re評 firm that it has refused to make the final payment under the contract. It was also alleged that the reevaluation firm breached the contract failing to utilize experienced appraisers and in admittedly curtailing the quality of their work in order to complete the reappraisal within the contract price. The assessor utilized the reappraisal as a basis for preparing the current assessment role. The members of the town board have no confidence in the reappraisal and wish to direct the assessor to use a prior assessment role as a basis of the assessment role to be prepared rather than continuing to use the reappraisal as the basis for his assessments. So, that was the fact pattern upon which the opinion was rendered that the board didn't have authority. have authority. I mean, just saying, it's, this was a situation where there was apparently, we haven't even gone to that level of investigation, where they're saying, look, we're recognizing that there may be, you know, a majority of the legislative body that's upset, but we're saying constitutionally, you don't have the ability to throw out that role.
But then, I mean, how would, how would one void a contract or services then?
Well, I mean, the contracts are different things. I'm talking about, I'm talking about the role.
I think you're settled back, yeah.
Well, we have, we have to amend if we're going to do that.
Right, right.
And, and again, the way you would, you know, just to be clear, because there's a lot of people in the public here. The, the way that that is addressed is through the grievance process set forth in the text. I mean, that is what they're telling us. And that, that's the decision that I located when this resolution was brought to me.
Eileen.
So Andy, you did not write this, you received this and the revised version of it. And the persons, for Tom, what you said, the persons who feel this way and got somebody to, to write the document, want the council to stand behind it with no, no facts, no, no evidence of it. I'm not saying there is or isn't, but I, I don't know how we could accuse a company of breach of contract and being the other things that were in the original one. I have no knowledge of any of those facts. And, you know, an attorney that isn't our attorney prepared this and people don't want to come forward. I'm not comfortable with it.
Hold on. Kamal.
Andy, is that the only opinion that you researched? Is there no other?
No, there's another one from, from council's office as well.
All right.
Affirming that.
Give us copies of those opinions.
Sure.
Just one opinion just doesn't really help us.
Yeah, no, there's, there's those two opinions and then I have, you know, a case law referencing the constitutional questions, which I can share with the council for sure.
Did you have a question, Tiffany?
I have a question and comments and questions, you know, this is what we're discussing. Under the city's contract with GARR, the city owns the data and valuation data that GARR collects. But GARR has not yet even produced four comparables for all residential properties for which the city paid extra in the weeks of March 15th. Why, why are more tax dollars being paid to GARR to provide what the city owns under the contract?
It's a good question. Shirshah.
There's no answer?
No. There's no representative GARR here, obviously. I suppose if the mayor would like to speak to it.
Well, it is online. Actually, we did request from the PEA, Tom, we voted for it, as did Heather, that we authorize them to provide the forecoms that are attached each residential property. It is online today, so you can access that information.
Also, though a lot of taxpayers have asked for the city for the information, GARR has produced no supporting data in con for its commercial property assessment. Again, our tax dollars are paying for GARR's work, the city owns the data, and we have the right to see it. That information that the people are requesting are not getting it.
So who, how?
So what, what are our options? Because, you know, we do have a large number of citizens who are here and they're fearing for their homes and different things like that, like what can we do?
I mean, here, here's what I would say. I mean, with regard to a couple of those questions, you know, my understanding is that the residential properties are available. With regard to the commercial properties, the methodology that they use, they use a massive appraisal methodology, and they consider income and expense and utilization and all of those things are what, as I understand it, we can explore this further with the council. But that is what they do to come up with, with their calculations, which are all subject to challenge. There, there's a bar process and there's a legal process for people to challenge that. And, you know, what?
I think, I think we're afraid, I mean, people are afraid that when it gets to that stage, it's too far along in the process to do something more comprehensive in terms of stopping what's being done because people don't have adequate information. To say they just go through the process, well, if they fail at that process, it's over. And then the, then the assessment is established and you have no recourse.
But to be clear, you know, the, the information, you know, from the assessors telling me that that information is available for people to look at, number one.
It is.
Number two, number two, number two, under foil, okay? You know, I've provided those opinions to our foil officer. Those items are specifically exempt under foil. Okay? So, you know.
Which items?
The comparable value of information. And I've shared that in connection with those. And, and so the question is, is if you do have a, a gross error that's been committed by the assessor or by GARR, be it in Hudson or be it somewhere else, you know, the value of your property, be it commercial or residential, you have the ability to come in and say, wait a minute, here's a sale, all the sale information Justin provided me is in his office. Wait a minute, there was a sale two blocks over that was for $200,000 last, this doesn't make sense. If the assessor does not agree to do that, you can go to the bar hearing, which is not, you know, a judicial hearing, it's with people from the community, and you can make your argument there. I understand the fear and the frustration and, and the concern that people have. All I'm telling you is, you know, I got this resolution and when I looked at it, it said, look, this is the process that one has to follow. That's all I'm telling you.
How about, Tom?
One second. Were you next?
Shirshah was next.
Shirshah.
Well, City had got to reassess our, the City of Hudson property reassess. If they are not doing their job fair and equally for the owner, what we should do with them? The reason I'm asking that question, my house assessment was amount of price than last year, I don't have no comparison. There is a number of commercial property in City of Hudson, there is no comparison. What about they wanted, they assessing that. Another example is same lot in State Street and Union Street. A State Street is expensive than Union Street. How it is fair and equal for homeowner in City of Hudson, like a, somebody's property was valued like a 200% increasing. And someone is a 30%, someone is a 10%, someone is a 50%. How it is fair and equal for the owner and how they deal?
That's what people are, that's why the man, you know, on State Street valued higher.
For example. Rollo, one more time, one more time.
I was, I was agreeing with him and just saying, how are the houses on State Street, you know, and particularly in the map area of 01, 005, and the area of Union of 01, 009, how are those houses valued more than on Union? You know, it's, it's not fair, you know, from my understanding, you have one house that, you know, made some improvements and everyone on the block is being assessed by that particular house. And that's not fair.
No.
Rollo, one more time. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry. 307 State Street, the lot size is 0.6 acre, the asset value is $36,020,000. Same acre size is eight Union Street, asset was $21,000. How it is fair?
Yeah. That's it.
705 Warren Street, 2018, asset value was 300,000. This year is 405, went up 135%. And 59 Dodge Street, 2018 was 160,000. This year is 260,000, 100,000 and a half. 315 Warren Street, from 265 to 475, went up to 210,000. So in my house, they are telling my taxes are decreasing, $1,200. Is that number will be staying? Can anyone give me a guarantee?
No.
So how it is fair and equally assessed for those houses in City of Hudson by the who hired GARR?
Rollo is next.
GARR don't do good job. Our, they took our taxpayer money and put everyone under pressure and everybody is not happy. And that's why you see the people are there because they don't do good job.
Rollo, one more time, one more time. I think Dominick was next.
So Andy, with this case study, that is a precedent that after the?
Dominick, really, you should bring it through me to Andy, okay?
I'm sorry. Tom?
Yeah.
Through this case study, was the grievance process, was this after the grievance process? And with the evidence that Shirshah is sharing, is that part of the grievance process to bring that information to the assessor for comparison?
It is. The problem is, if you get that far along in the process, you really don't have a lot of time if you're rejected. So we're concerned with creating a wider time period for people to either grieve or to just get rid of, to terminate our contract with, I'm not, it's what's being looked for, is to terminate the contract with GARR and perhaps start all over again with a more, as Shirshah put it, fair and equal assessment. Eileen was next.
Andy, Tom, Andy mentioned that maybe an executive session, because this is serious enough that people spent money on an attorney several times and have claims that they feel strongly enough. I think people need to, to, to us at least, and maybe an executive session if they're concerned about reprisals, but give, give us some facts to, to deal with. I don't doubt what Shirshah read, but I think it has to be attested to in order to go down a path like this.
Thank you. You know, Kamal.
So we have homes that are habitat for humanity homes that originally were $130,000. And, you know, you need to get into that program to be into those homes. So now those homes are looking at 305,000. And that's, that's a big risk. So you need proof. I mean, that's a lot of proof in the fact that this room is packed. I mean, there's no more proof than that. I mean, there's, it, it just shows gross incompetence by GARR. And we look bad as a city if we're not going to put the citizens first.
I don't disagree, but, but putting people, putting people first is what we're doing by, by trying to figure our way through this. I just, I just think we ought to be as careful and complete as we can be before we take on a breach of contract and some of the accusations. I don't, I don't deny them, I don't doubt them, but an executive session, I would like to hear.
Have citizens who are worried that have over 150% increase.
I think Shirshah will next. Oh, sorry, ten minutes.
You know, I've been hearing, I've been hearing from a lot of different people for the city that when they've been addressing this major concern here, that some of our local politicians have been stating to them, you know, if you don't know, you can just say, I don't know, but I'm going to do my best to try to help, you know, find the right answers. I think, you know, that's why we are voted in our seats. But from what I've been hearing, local politicians have been telling some people in the public, you know, well, your house is now assessed for 300,000, you can sell that, you can sell your house for that. And that is a horrible, that is disgusting, that is a horrible message to say to your constituents, to the people that live here, want to raise, move out. That's basically what you're telling the people, you know.
What I'm telling them?
Some, some local politicians. Say, I don't know.
I think Shirshah.
But what I'm saying is, what message are we saying? If that, if, if, if one local politician is telling that property owner that, they're telling their neighbors, they're telling other people in other boards, that is the message that they're sending out to us, sell your property, move out of Hudson. You know, I, I don't want to send that message out, I want to support the people to live here and have a fair assessment. You know, we have people who want to raise here with their families in the cemetery here. They move away, they may not even be able to afford to come back to even visit their family in the cemetery.
I think Shirshah will next.
Yeah, I'm following Kamal Johnson, he was telling 150%. For 26 Union Street, from 154,000 to 339,000 and went up to 220%. And Alderman Dominic Moranti was telling about the grievance. How many homeowner know about the grievance and how much was the time trade? And it's not that easy to do the grievance. I want to thank Linda Musman, if she is in here, and include myself, who was doing more than 30 homeowner helping to grievance is, who, but doing that, only that person know how hard it is to do the grievance. For my one, I don't have no comparison. In my community, some people even don't speak English, they cannot even read English. They have to hire either attorney or get help from somebody. 2012, I had some person to do for me and then my price came down, so GARR made me to expend money. Why I'm getting that punishment? I worked hard to make money.
Kamal, I think.
So this is my question for Tom, to end. So what can we do tonight so that we can maybe slow down this process or people can leave here feeling like we're going to be fighting for?
I have a couple of things. We could schedule a special meeting, since this is a kind of urgent problem. And before that special meeting, we can have the executive session that Eileen's looking for. But I think what we might want to do tonight is open this meeting up when we're finished amongst ourselves and hear some of the things. I don't think that puts us in jeopardy at all to hear from the public, some of their complaints.
We should end it.
In the meantime.
Are there like deadlines that, I mean, the contract, I don't necessarily see that.
Do you have the contract? I had it somewhere.
But we can, you know, but we still have time.
We can make that amendment change tonight.
I'm sorry.
Or make that amendment change tonight.
What do you mean?
First, how do we handle the resolution?
I mean, a vote on the existing resolution?
Or make the amendment change of the word.
Basically, what, I'm sorry, I mean, what you're going to have in terms of the assessment process, you've had, you're going to have a tentative roll that's going to come out on about May 1st. And then at the end of May, you have the grievance day. And then following the decisions by the bar, you have the final roll, which typically is July 1st.
And who sets those dates?
The valuable date is.
That's up my statute.
July 1st.
Yeah.
And then.
Yeah, tentative assessments by line five one.
Yeah.
Final one, seven.
That's not going to be enough time, especially for our people that don't speak English.
Tom was not even present in the city when those grievance time was. Some people I know from my community, some people was in San Andreas, and I mentioned that when we have a meeting with GARR and I was asking GARR, how you guys went to from 77% to 100%? And in the beginning, he's telling me who was told, I'm like, by who? Then he's backed up. I'm like, who told you? I'm like, "Who told you?" "Oh, you know, I work for G.A.R. I'm not a G.A.R. owner of this and that." And the bar online, he's answering me, "It is not told by anybody. It is like a, some sort of suggest by the state." Or suggest by the state to, when you do that, he says, "Do the hundred percent." But I wanna give you one, like, for example, eleven Columbia Street, two thousand eighteen, price value was fifty-five thousand dollars. Two thousand nineteen, by G.A.R., price value that did assess hundred forty thousand dollars is going up eighty thousand dollars, which is hundred fifty-eight percent. If we do the hundred percent price value from twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen, if it goes even thirty percent up, it's coming seventy-one thousand four hundred twenty-nine dollars. I don't know how they did assess.
Just told you, sure you told.
Two things. One, I was told by some people that received an assessment that doubled and tripled and their home is under construction. And from my understanding, they weren't even supposed to receive that because it's under construction. Do you know why that is?
No, I mean, they do when, when, you know, hypothetical out there. When any property is under construction, the assessors do, should be going. If they're doing a constant rebuild, that's one of the issues you have. A lot of times going by.
I know under construction. I was asking, saying, "Well, wouldn't, wouldn't, why didn't say it now?"
So what they typically will do, if they're doing reboils, they will stage that so that they don't take it to fullback, but they recognize what's been, you know, fixed to the property and how it's been approved.
My second comment is, you know, I would definitely like to hear from the public that is here tonight so we can make this decision, but I'm ready to vote on it.
Do you want to hear something? Tom?
So, just to reiterate what you were saying before, Andy, regardless if you have a contract problem with the provider, you're still stuck with the assessment per state law.
Yeah, I mean, the, the council doesn't have the ability to say, to do it themselves or to direct the mayor or authorize the mayor to do that.
So we terminate the contract.
So what would we, what would we be voting on?
I mean, looking at this contract, you basically, this resolution, excuse me, the first, essentially, four lines of the heading would go away. It would just be to terminate the contract.
But even if you terminate a contract, you're saying these assessed values still stay?
I mean, the- The evaluations have been done, right? So the, the preliminary roll has been done. The tentative roll is gonna be coming out on, on May first. There's not data collection going on right now.
But I'm still wondering, so the, so the state then still tells the community that if they're dissatisfied with the vendor process and the numbers that they paid for via the contract, they decide that they wanna keep a certain type of system taxation from a previous iteration, they're, they can't.
Well, what they're, what they're saying is, is that the legislative body has no authority to substitute its judgment for that of the assessor and that the exclusive remedy available to a property owner who considers himself aggrieved is to go through the grievance.
It just seems like they have an incredible amount of extra legal power.
Well, because jurisdictionally, it rests with the assessor. I mean, the, the assessor is statutorily tasked with setting the assessments.
But is he, are they at that stage? I mean, if we stop it now, then they really have-
But you aren't, you as a council, don't have the ability to-
To stop it. We're not rejecting their assessment, we're rejecting them.
Well, that's what John was asking.
Is there a termination clause?
There is, yeah.
So, there's not, I'm sorry, Tom, maybe?
No, go ahead.
Thank you. So if our decision to terminate this contract today, it is not gonna change any of the assessments? So is it more to send this, if, if the timeframe to cancel this contract is sent it to legal to address this in a way that it's gonna be right to terminate the contract?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's up to the council, certainly. Again, all I'm telling you is the authority, where you have authority and don't have authority, this would be the resolution. To the extent you're talking about a potential, you know, action against G.A.R., I mean, that would be something, you know, even in order to draw the complaint, you would need to have some evidence to do that. You know, and that, that's where we are. And, and I mean, that issue, you certainly have time. Right, I mean, that's, that's up to you.
Well, let's start hearing about some of that evidence from the public.
Hi, I'm Zia, Fourth Ward resident. I think you guys are looking for anecdotal stuff rather than like some holistic. I'm gonna write a letter to the editor about the holistic side of things. Fourth Ward resident, I am the property manager of two homes that my parents own and our goal is to provide affordable, long-term housing to people committed to the community of Hudson. The new assessments for the two houses we own have gone up by almost three hundred percent. And this means that we will have to ask each tenant to pay an extra one hundred dollars a month, which is not sustainable for tenants or for us. And there is absolutely no incentive to offer long-term affordable housing when you are assessed against these properties who would be making in a weekend what we would make in a month off of rent. So there's some more holistic stuff I won't go into, 'cause everybody here wants to talk, but I just have to say that I saw the guy assessing the house and he stood outside for less than three minutes. He also looked at the house next to me, which has completely been redone and regutted, and all the other houses on the block, which for the most part have been redone, regutted, and there are no homeowners present. It's really, really despicable. And then the last anecdotal thing that I'll say is that my parents, who are in their seventies, were trying to get together the, what's it called, the thing-
Grievance.
The grievance, because everybody on the council who we talked to said file a grievance. Well, unless you're an MFA-educated person such as myself, I have no idea how you'd be able to do that. I had to use all of my Photoshop skills to put together a nearly seventy-page document that my parents were completely unable to do. And I think that alone should show that G.A.R. is inaccessible to the people of Hudson and that you can make a case on alone. But I do think that you also need to take a much bigger holistic look at what's going on because I think that it should never have gotten to this point. It's totally unacceptable, so.
Mr. President, how about the track law?
Hi, I'm a homeowner on Lower Union Street. And so I took notes of how, in what order to say this. So my house was assessed at three hundred percent, the value that I purchased it at in twenty twelve, though I have done no substantial work on it. I was in the maybe lucky situation that I had had a home equity loan appraisal in twenty sixteen, which came in at something very much like what I paid for the house in twenty twelve. And part of what I'm wondering is if there are any other homeowners who had comparable experiences, 'cause I was able to submit that as part of my grievance, which I hope, you know, shows. Well, but so my, the, the holistic thing I'm wondering is, is that like potentially a grounds for some kind of legal investigation into the, in the discrepancy between the two assessments? And like, what are the measures and rubrics that are being applied by these two different financial, well, the financial institution and then the assessors that could potentially show incompetence on G.A.R.'s part? So I was thinking, maybe a show of, you know, ask the community, like, did anyone else have similar assessments already done in hand? Then I just wanted to also agree with that, well, a neighbor had suggested to me that part of what went so wrong with this assessment is that essentially the city is being regarded as a bunch of investment properties and, and is being, values are being assessed based on their income-producing qualities rather than their home qualities, which seems to be a citywide issue. So, and then I just wanted to suggest that if you didn't catch on the AMC last night, they played, there was a, there's a program called Alternative Radio and the person who was speaking was talking about exactly this paradigm shift in real estate markets worldwide towards the financializing of, of real estate overall, towards investment rather than home. And you can catch that.
Hi there, my name's Ami. So I have a couple of things to say to these points. The first I'll say is, I also have that. In fact, I refinanced my building last week. And so I had extremely current data, which was nothing like what G.A.R. suggested. It was a difference of about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, in fact. And so I think that if the city does need to gather evidence for how poor of a job G.A.R. has done, I don't think that that will be very difficult. I think that there'll be a host of people who have documents like that. There'll be just the kind of glaring inaccuracies that already exist, some of which have already been read by the council. You know, it occurs to me that, you know, there's kind of a couple of different issues, obviously, in this resolution, which, and I wanted to ask a question, if I may, of council, the city attorney perhaps. The case, I'm not an attorney, but it seems, sounds to me, the language that's cited in that case example indicates that the, all of the power rests on our assessor, Justin Maxwell. And it seems to me, at this point, and I may be inaccurate in this, but to my understanding, this document, which is really just a series of numbers from G.A.R., I don't know who's actually seen this thing, but I have. I filed a request to look at it. You know, there's no information of any kind, it's just numbers. And I don't think that Mr. Maxwell has certified this roll. And so right now, it isn't, the assessor doesn't even have it yet. What's happening right now is G.A.R. is finishing their work. And so it seems to me, and again, I'm not an attorney, but that unless, if the mayor decides to fire G.A.R. before this process is complete, to, you know, to end the contract, to breach whatever you wanna call it, that the assessor will not have a document to certify and may indeed not wish to certify this document anyway. And that, I take it, is the point that this matter must be dealt with in a timely manner to prevent it becoming the assessor's role. Because right now, it's G.A.R.'s role. And G.A.R. does not have the legal standing to be defended by the state. As I understand it, again, you know, I'm, I'm not an attorney. But that, that I see it as, and, and G.A.R. will deliver the role to the assessor, the final role, after the informal review process on May first. And as I said, again, my understanding, and if I'm wrong, then it sounds very unfortunate indeed, but not until that day will it be the assessor. And until then, it is up to the common council and indeed the mayor to say, to, to, the mayor can direct the assessor to say, I, I take it, that we would like you, the assessor, our office of assessment, to, to do this process rather than have G.A.R. do it. Because G.A.R. just isn't doing a very good job. And, and, and before I get the answer, I'll, I'll, you know, I'll stop talking. I do wanna say there's, there's really, I'm sure there are a myriad of shocking and distressing numbers that people can talk about. I mean, you know, like I said, I've, I've gone over, I mean, I've spent hours upon hours looking over this proposed roll. And, you know, one number is as distressing as the next. But to me, the biggest problem is something like thirty percent of the properties in the city went up. Only thirty. Something like thirty percent of them went down. Of the thirty that went up, only ten percent went through the informal review process. So the numbers of the thirty percent that went up, all those people who didn't do anything, G.A.R.'s just gonna submit that number and that's what the assessor's gonna rubber stamp. There's a lot of numbers that went down. And I think that people, when they're estimating how much their taxes are gonna go up, are, those who have had increases are vastly inaccurate. And just one, I think of a very interesting example. Some of you are probably aware, there's a factory on Worth Avenue. I don't exactly know what they do there, but I do know that prior to G.A.R.'s role, their assessment was thirty-two million dollars, some kind of giant commercial building. They are according to the roll. So on the city, on, on the roll, they, they were assessed at thirty-two million dollars.
I don't understand how they're on a roll. It's not Hudson.
Well, it's, I can show you a copy of the, of the roll.
Curious, what's that number?
Well, G.A.R. put them on the roll and G.A.R. found that they should go from thirty-two million down to twenty million for the property. And then for the land, which is approximately a hundred and sixty acres, they thought it should go from the assessment of two-point-six million down to eight-hundred thousand, which is roughly five thousand dollars per acre. So even in Greenport, that's good value. No, this is, this is, is it, no, this is, this is the one that's like right across the street from your house, Mr. President, yeah.
You're sure you're not an attorney?
No, I, I, I just, well, I spent a lot of time reading, 'cause I was pretty ignorant of this process to begin with. Anyway, so the question of the assessor and whether you, that, that I think is the most important, so.
Should be, thank you.
I'd like to speak-
About why we need to act quickly because we're not just, we're not rejecting the final assessment. We're still in the process under G.A.R. So we need to act on that first before it gets to the final assessment. No, I believe you, I just, that's just a strange and inaccurate.
The address is, what is it, fifty-three to eighty-three Worth Avenue? That's what they have.
The factory, the one that's-
That is a prison property, that is in the city.
It's a prison property. So the prison property, you know, it's all, all the numbers are not that accurate.
Please, one more time.
Hi, my name is Janet Keely, I live in the First Ward, I am. I've lived there for thirty-one years, I've been paying taxes for thirty-one years. Before this most recent preliminary assessment, over those years, my taxes, my assessment had gone up over four hundred percent. It would have gone up perhaps to a thousand, but I, along with others, have been involved in two class action lawsuits, which I think that the city will be facing again, unless there is some serious consideration of what is going on here. In addition to that, of course, my husband and I have grieved before the B.A.R. at least a dozen times and had two small claims assessment reviews. There are many other people in the community who have been through that. And so I'm telling you, there are people who are ready to speak up and to speak for their rights. Now, so certainly when this preliminary assessment came up and I saw that my ta, my assessment went up a hundred and twenty-five percent in a year, did nothing to my house, no improvements, I immediately requested the four comparables from G.A.R., which I obtained and looked up. The comparables were full of mistakes. And so I went, you know, had the conversation with G.A.R. and they're gonna consider it, et cetera. I then heard that the information that's been used to come up with the data that G.A.R. has utilized for this preliminary assessment, I had heard, I didn't know it was true, that it was not collected by G.A.R., instead it was collected by Justin Maxwell, is that his name?
Yes.
The assessor. So I called him last week to see if this was in fact true, that, did he collect this information? Yes, indeed, he did. He collected the information and gave it to G.A.R. They did the analysis of it. And it is filled with mistakes. And if anybody starts looking at it, they will see it. They will see it. I would also just like to say, Andy, if you can put, you said you might have it on the website somewhere, the citation to the case or cases that you referenced. I'm assuming they're Court of Appeals with Endor Third Department. And would be helpful, I don't have a pad with me to write it down, but I would like the citations, to look them up. It's always arguable. There's nothing written in stone in the law, it's always arguable, don't give up.
That's right. Thank you.
Hi, Crystal Heinz, Fifth Ward, I'm also an attorney here in Hudson. I do a lot of real estate transactions, it's part of my practice. I think one of the things that everybody should realize is the goal of the assessment is to bring the properties up to their full market values. So, because the city has been bad about following and tracking the market, and bringing the properties up over the years to where their full market values will be, we're seeing these doubling, tripling, and quadrupling of the assessed values. And that is to be expected, when the city isn't sort of paying attention as the market is exploding. That's number one. Number two, I'm not a fan of, of the data that's come out with GARR. The taxable, the valuation date, the, the date on which our assessments are supposed to be assessed, is July 1st of 2018. So, I've been seeing GARR use sales data from October, November, December, and even January of 19. I think that data's too new. I don't think that there's any way to know on July 1st, 2018, what a property is going to sell for in October, November, December. I've also seen GARR take listings. I, I have spoke of someone who put their property on the market in October, and that assessment came out at that listing price. There is no connection with somebody's ask price and the full market value, there just isn't. Your ask price is aspirational, and frankly, it was stale anyway, it was well beyond that July 1st taxable status date. I think that, that they have done a poor job with the commercial properties. I had a number of clients come to me to help with the grievance process, because it is complicated, and I don't see any rhyme or reason as to how they came up with those numbers. So, I think that, yeah, there are some big glaring errors in the assessment role, and I don't think that they've done a good job, but I think on the other end, we all have to realize, you know, my property's not worth, most of our properties here in the city of Hudson aren't worth $130,000. So, if you were at 130, and you've gone up to 400, well, maybe that's what your property is actually worth. Doesn't mean your property taxes are going to go up fourfold. If everybody comes up as they should, the tax base, the, the mill rate should actually come down.
It's just not consistent.
Well, we don't know, we don't know yet. We won't know what our taxes are until we have, until we know what the city needs are, until we know what the school budget is, until we know what the final role is. So, anything, anything before then is completely speculative. And I, I think that it's wrong for people to assume that I've been, gone up three times in my assessment, my taxes are going to go up three times. It doesn't necessarily work that way. So, I, I think that there's just some information that, that people don't, but on the whole, I agree with most people, that GARR has not done a great job here.
Thank you. I think Billy was next. Mr. Hughes?
Yes, thank you. Both of these would be for you, Andy. The first one is, when I'm listening to you cite the cases, and each time you mention the legislative body, the, the mayor actually represents the executive body. And so, I, I would like for you to speak to that. But, my other point is, if and do, if what you say is true, what happens if the mayor just decides not to sign the rule?
Good question. It's a really good question. What the decisions are saying is that the sole authority rests in the office of the assessor. It's not with the legislative body, and it's not with the mayor. It's with the assessor. Because they statutorily set up the process for the assessor to be responsible for setting the preliminary role, the tentative role, and the final role. So, that's the office where it resides. And, you know, just as certain other offices in the city, the code enforcement office, things like that, have certain jurisdictional authority over certain matters, this is where that is. But, that's all I'm saying.
I'm sorry.
What's that, the second question? Was the mayor...
It's governed, I mean, the role is set by the assessor. That's...
Hi, I'm Nicole Vidor, and I have a real estate office in Hudson, and helped many people with their assessments. And I did not see one group of four...
Comp's.
Comp's. That were proper comps. I, personally, I was comped with three residential's. I'm a two-family house. You, you can't comp a two-family to a residential. Every comp that I saw was cherry picking the highest, highest sales. It had nothing to do with square footage, bedrooms, it had nothing to do with, I couldn't even find what it had to do with. So, I think it's really important that we look at the job that they're doing, because I think it is totally unprofessional. And I think, if you want, you could get together a bunch of brokers to sit down and show you, we do this every day, comp properties, to be able to price properties and to be able to negotiate. And all of the ones that I saw were bogus. I didn't see one group of four comps that were on the mark. And that's not on.
Thank you.
Hi. Christine Baiki, I own the West Cut House on the corner of Fifth and Columbia, and I don't really want to speak anecdotal, anecdotally. I want to talk about a bigger issue, because when I started looking at all the information relating to my house, which they were pricing me at $300 a square foot, more expensive, I think, than the Tiger House, more expensive than all the B&Bs over on Allen and, and Willard Place, I had three, three groups of papers. I had the, the residential, the commercial, and then the recent sales. And I had several meetings, conversations with the people at GARR, and I will certainly speak to the lack of professionalism. I spent time talking to previous B&B owners, to people that are Airbnb platform owners doing short-term rentals. And, you know, GARR didn't really even acknowledge the issue with short-term rentals. I left my meeting with GARR Monday morning, two weeks ago, and I went down to City Hall, and I went into the, to Matthew, and I said, would you please print me out everything that's a, that's a 4% lodging tax information? There's 152, the last time that we did this, there were 152 different properties paying lodging tax, okay? Then you go look at, at how everything's designated. Of those 152, there's, 418 is a designation for inn and lodge, which makes you commercial, 210 is the designation for being a residential home. Well, I, I bought my house to be my home long-term, but also to be a bed and breakfast. And a bed and breakfast in New York State is your primary residence. It has to be, you know, it, it's residential, you're, it's owner occupied, you're, you have to have certain guidelines, like, you know, hard-wired smoke detectors, whatever. Of the 152 entities paying the 4% lodging tax, 10 of them were designated as the bed and breakfast, 10 of them were designated as 418, and I went around and around with them about why am I considered commercial? It's my primary residence, you know? And to me, what they said was, you know, this whole thing with Airbnb, it's a huge problem, and we all know that it's a huge problem, and I'm not saying anything, you know, it's no one that's, that, no one that has an Airbnb property, it's not their fault the way everything was assessed. I'm not saying that at all, but I'm just saying, we need, this is a huge issue. Between the assessor's office and Matt's office, it's eight steps. They had never even, they had never even communicated. GARR didn't even know that there were 152 4% lodging tax, tax properties in this town. So, to me, that's a huge issue that's been overlooked, and, you know, the way it was explained to me when I talked to both GARR and to Justin, when you're designated commercial, the algorithm is slightly different, and you pay more because you are considered a property that's generating income. Meanwhile, you know, how much income are you actually generating, which is beside the point? But I just think this is a huge issue that we need to look at, because we've got this, this, this consultant who hasn't even dealt with the fact that there's 152 properties, and only 10 of them were designated as inns and lodges. And I own, I own my house, I live in my house, and of the 152 others, I didn't have time to go look at it, but there's a lot of people who don't live in those properties, they are 100% commercial properties, and then, you're just creating a different, you're just creating a different playing field, you know? It's not level, it's not fair. So, to me, regardless of this resolution that you're reviewing, there are bigger issues that we need to address with the, with GARR and, and the way the assessment's been done.
Just being in that contract, I don't think that would be part of the standard practices as practiced by the profession. I don't, you know, that's, that's probably, wouldn't you think any of that's covered under that, whether, you know, how you determine whether something's commercial or residential? I know that's in the contracts.
Look, Tom, let me interrupt, I'm just going to tell you what I was told by Justin, per what GARR told him, was that, well, for the 142 properties that are, are Airbnb-type properties that are on that platform, or on VRBO, or HomeAway, for those properties, they're designated as what they were before they were purchased. So, I'm thinking, well, my house, I'm, I'm a primary resident and running a bed and breakfast, and I'm not designated as what I was when I was, when I bought my house, but yet, 142 other buildings are designated as what they were, which, for many of them, is residential, and now they're commercial. So, it's something that has to be examined, it's not fair, it's not equitable, and, and it speaks to the concerns with, with GARR.
I'm Tina Meyer, I live in Hudson, and for the past three or four weeks, I've been traipsing around a petition. And one of the interesting things about doing this is you talk to lots of people. And in response to some of the suggestions I've heard from some of the council members, that we've got to get the facts, I, I can assure you, and that we are the facts, and what you're hearing tonight is an amazing accumulation of facts that say that something is terribly, terribly wrong. As a journalist, if I had the time, I could sit down, spend a week, and draw up a 50-page report that would be devastating, devastating about what's going on in Hudson, on so many levels. I thought, that's why I thought this, this proposal sort of stops the clock, gives us some time to analyze this. Everybody says, these are complicated issues, but that doesn't mean, because they're complicated, we have to hurl insults at the population, for God's sakes. And, I'm sorry, but the mill rate, once you, once you get an assessment, your assessment goes up over 50%, no mill rate's going to help you. I met with people over the last couple of weeks, I sat in this couple's living room, they've lived here all their life, all they've done is take care of their house. They live in, they're retired, they're in their 70s, and they got this thing from the city. And I looked at it, it says, uh, 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 school tax, proposed, suggested school tax is going up from $500 a year to $3,000. I mean, this is, so, as we say in the business, it's crazy. So, I'm, and, and I know the assessor is, we found this out, that the assessor is the point person, right? If we can't, the people of Hudson can't do something about this, and we want to sit there and say, just because the assessor, who's what, all 25 or 26? I think he used to work for GARR. And, and if people pointed out, he, I'm sorry, but if, if this is what this is about, and we're going to sit here and say, uh, and, my wife knows what she's talking about, this is, just because you got one case, Andy, is not, is hardly, is hardly proof that this thing, we can't do anything about it, we can't. So, I would urge the council, please, put, do something now. Make a statement that says, we can put a stop to this, at least, and go back, the assessor can do this, we can ask him to do this. Say, go back to last year, 100%, at least, at least you get an average that's fair to everybody. In terms of the grievance procedure, I've been here a long time, as my wife pointed out, we've grieved a lot. This is, this, it's, it's not only an unfair process, because the only people that win in the grievance world are people with money, or people that have attorneys. There are tons of people in Hudson, I guarantee, that have no idea how to, how to do a grievance, right? And they, and they are, it's, it's an unfair process, but it gets more unfair, terribly unfair, when we have the kinds of numbers that we have with this assessment, with the number of people that have been hurt. And I just, I, I urge the council for the future, because of, to keep the future of Hudson intact, to please do something, and do something quickly, so that the people of Hudson know that they're not going to be strapped by something that they can't change. Thank you.
Yeah, my name's Bob Simmons, and is that gentleman's correct? How could that guy, if he worked for GARR, hire GARR? Wouldn't that be a conflict of interest?
Mayor hired him.
That would be a conflict of business. And, also with that, if the company did not perform to their contract, violated, how can anything they do be legal? If they're not, they didn't fulfill their terms in a timely manner, like anybody else, a lot of times, athletes, movie stars, they have, they have morals clauses, they don't do something right, they get, they can't. They didn't do their part, then how can they, how can that be violated? How can that be void, not, not voided? Because my, I live on Worth Avenue, when I contacted GARR, I was told, well, I live on a million-dollar block, and they used two residential houses for me. And then they tried to say I have a basement. I don't have a basement in my house, because I have an independent guy revalidating my house right now. I got my report, I don't, he looked at it, he goes, gee, I don't see a basement here. Their thing says you have a basement. So, somebody needs to check in these boys, because they'll have a lot of problems.
Abdul Smea, 228 Columbia Street. I don't, I don't want to talking about only my house, I forget my house, my house is there. So, I'm talking about some Columbia Street I live in. You know the Columbia Street track road? You know that Columbia Street under the swell line going? City never fixed that swell line. It was built up 191800. I asked the last 10 years of the DPWO subordinate, can it fix the, my Columbia, Columbia Street? It says, we can, because we have to fix the swell line. So, you compare the Columbia Street to other states, it's not fair. That's totally unfair. That's it, they are track road, swell line under the, we are sitting on the top of the swell lines. So, I think the city should locate that into swell line fix very soon. That's important, nobody knows that, I tell you that today. Another thing I, well, the Sessao told that, the one of the 58,000, that's town hall, there's a couple of houses, 58, 60, and even city, last time, walks on the 51 or 52,000. City sells that option. That house now is 138,000, because one, that's the one problem with Hudson City. Generation is that one guy coming somewhere, they have tons of money, they buy one house, and you evaluate that one house compared to all block, but other houses sell, you don't locate that one.
Right.
That, that, that have to be located. Look at the other house, I told you that, 305 State Street, if you used to, I own that, I buy the 59,000, that house, I sell the, sell the $80,000, assessment was $80,000. But this guy was raised up 242,000, 200, 2% was raised up. I cannot believe that, and that's happened, this happened to this thing. Columbia, you cannot buy state by state, you cannot compare with the Columbia Street to other states, no matter what. Never, never city, you go to the, how many percent is raised up in the Columbia Street? Never city compares the Columbia Street to others. That's, that's, you go to the record, all assessment, I can tell you, the Columbia Street is always lower because of track road, swell line, and swell line need to fix. And city, I tell you today, I asked the 10 years almost, fix the Columbia Street, that they didn't say, no, they have to, we've been there, we have to fix the swell line for us. When you fix it, the, my Columbia Street? When? When you do the black car? No! I live it, I know that. I was involved all the time, I know that. So, I'm, this, this GARR association doing, another thing, last time, was the 77%...
DPWO, right?
I, I told them, 70, 77%, I don't know, state require 100% or not? Why 77 to 100, jump to 100%? You can do 80% gradually, and I hear that some people say, oh, we supposed to do the back two years ago, the assessment? This is not a people call, that the city is supposed to gradually, two, three years, do the VBA. City didn't do that.
DPWO, right?
I told them, 77 percent, I don't know, state require 100 percent or not? Why 77 to 100, jump to 100 percent? You can do 80 percent gradually, and I hear that some people say, "Oh, we supposed to do the back, two years ago, the assessment?" This is not a people call, that the city is supposed to gradually, two, three years, do the VBA. City did not do that, that's not our people suffering that, they hear the 200,000, 300,000 raise up. It's not a what, like that? So I'm, I'm telling you, this is a lot, we helped a lot of people, and our community, I'm with Sessao, a lot of people did not understand how this thing. I think so, we are helped everywhere, so you know, that should be, should be something to do. I believe that way.
Steve Dunn?
Steve Dunn of Fourth Ward. I'm going to assume for the sake of argument, and I don't dispute that there's probably been many errors in the evaluation process, let's assume the work of GARR is generally incompetent. Then the issue is, what is the remedy? Can, suppose, for example, the city, or the council, or advocates persuade the assessor to ignore the GARR work product? What is the implication of that? Because that would suggest that's abandoning the revaluation process in its entirety. What is the legal implication to the city of abandoning the revaluation process at this time? Because then there are people, real people, that are damaged, such as people whose homes are assessed at close to fair market value, while others are assessed, as Crystal Hines pointed out, at a fraction of their market value. So that's an uneven, unfair playing field as we speak, and that's why you have a revaluation process. I'm under the impression, under state law, it's required on a periodic basis. So again, what is the remedy if we throw out the GARR work product wholesale? Does it put the city in breach of state law? Does it put the city at risk of a lawsuit? And this is all assuming you persuade the assessor to do this. The assessor already has the GARR data, flawed as it is, subject to modifications as the month of April passes, he already has that data. So really, the only thing the council can ask is for the assessor to just literally ignore the data that's already in his hands. And to persuade him to do that, one thing to ask, again, is that appropriate, given his duties as the assessor? And what legal posture does that put the city in? Again, I understand the frustrations with the poor work product, and it's not so much terminating, assuming that's true that it is a poor work product, isn't so much terminating the GARR contract as saying, "We want our money back." Because they've already largely done the work, it's not like you're stopping them from doing much more work. You're saying, "We paid you 150,000, we want it back, because your product was garbage." But that doesn't really address what people are upset about in this room, 150,000. They're upset with the quality of the work product. Thank you for listening.
I can answer any questions. I know that the assessment's already delayed, so there, I assume that was allowed by law, otherwise they couldn't have done it.
That's right, and whether we used up the last year available or not, and we're out of another shot or not, I don't know, but that's a darn important question for the city attorney to answer.
It was also delayed at an earlier point in the process. Yeah, I just was saying, it was also delayed at an earlier point in the process. We didn't have a preliminary role the last time the assessment was delayed.
You know, a mistake is a mistake, whether it occurs in January, or February, or March. I mean, this is very nice to say, "Oh, well, let's wait until next year, and we'll fix all these mistakes." But right now is when people are being hurt by these mistakes, and the process that's been started is a process that's being built on mistakes. All we're saying is, let's stop it, let's stop the process, fix the mistakes, and figure out what we can do to move forward.
And it's more than mistakes. You know, overlooking the 152.
Sorry, I wanted to talk to other people.
Bloody Bruce, 308 State Street. I just wanted to speak to GARR's, the way you get to the information. It was delivered in PDFs, there was no searchable database. So you had to go property by property by property by property. You couldn't go like an Excel sheet and say, "I want to look up all the properties from this one to this one." You had to go by their, the ones that they chose for your house. So as far as just technically, the way they have carried out this assessment for people to grieve, has been a very difficult process, just technically. That's.
I was just saying, there was. This person have?
Me? No. Hi. If I make any wrong statements, I'm sorry, I'm basing it off of what I've heard, and I'm just a government student, but this problem doesn't seem like it's happened over a matter of weeks, it's a couple of months. So I'm only curious as to why it's been only addressed now, and why hasn't it, like, been pointed out? Because these property increases or decreases in value, they don't seem like, oh, a couple hundred, they seem to be, as someone mentioned, what, 153 percent? They're big increases, so I'm just wondering why it hasn't been seen as an issue until right now, when it's been already a couple of months that GARR's made these mistakes. That's it.
I just want to counter what the mayor said, and the lawyer for the city, that material is not available. The, I have a foil out, and I asked for that, and I have not received it. That information is not available of what the whole city, all the comps, for everybody, all of it. We should be entitled to that, we pay for it. How the city has, how the commercial property has been assessed is a mystery. There is no way anyone in this room can figure out how they came to those numbers. Seriously, there is nothing around that's available to the public to look at all those numbers. The other thing is, if there is not a time that the council needs a lawyer, it is right now. And I suggest the council get a lawyer, because I'm appreciative of our city lawyer, but he represents the mayor. So I just want to be clear, that the council should have its own lawyer, has given up that right, because they claim that the mayor and the council got along. I'm not convinced that that is what we seek now. This assessment has been a disaster. People are going crazy over what has happened to our city. People have been suggested to get out of town, if you can't deal with this, sell your house, because that's what it's worth. Well, that's not an answer, we want to build a community, not tear it up. This is really what's going on, and we need to stop it right now. The assessor is the sole, there is a word called sole, and it is about he, or she is the person who will decide what that document will be. And we're not stopping anything, because nothing has been delivered yet. This is a preliminary concept that we're in right now, so we're not, we're not, Maxwell has nothing. He doesn't have a document yet. It hasn't been delivered, because GARR is still working on it. So I think there's a lot of misinformation about where we are in the process. The process can be stopped now, and we can be assured that we can get it corrected before it's too late. And as Peter Meyer has stated, and many people, going through the grieving process is not going to be good for everybody. And we've already helped many in the Bangladesh community, many of our neighbors, and they're not going to be able to go through that. They're just not going to be able to manage that complex process, or go out and hire somebody to, to evaluate their house. What's the word? Appraisers. So you're going to have to spend another $500 to get your house appraised, and that BAR may not honor. So thank you.
Let's start in reverse, I mean, if you're in.
Yeah, yeah, this is just to address what the government student said. I think that actually, everyone on the common council was very aware that there was something wrong the moment the assessments were sent out, and I think some of you obviously were feeling that as well, but, you know, a lot of people just said, "Hey, go and, go and, go and grieve." And then the grievance became this big issue, but like, there's been something wrong all along, and it was really unappreciated that people just said, "Hey, like, just go grieve." And now you're being, like, the community is saying, "Hey, like, you need to draw a line in the sand. You guys actually need to make a decision, and you need to show what side you stand on, and I'll just remind you that you should listen to your voters before there are no more, and there's only, you know, bachelorettes growing up on your sidewalk."
Sorry, this is my first time speaking at the Hudson Common Council. Who do I recommend her towards? Is that you? Anyways. You know, I appreciate, I've only been here six years, I appreciate all of the intelligent people that we have here in the community, and all the great assets we have, you know, lawyers, and doctors, and, you know, engineers, and architects, and all the other professions, and, you know. But, you know, I sit here questioning myself, or questioning us, if we haven't lost our collective minds. Have we not lost our goddamn minds? Okay? Like, very quickly, these are our neighbors, these are our elderly people that can't afford these tax increases, these are the minority members of the community, low-income members of the community, people that are struggling, people that are starting families, that cannot afford this. Perhaps rents will go up, maybe they won't, eventually they will. You know, a house that's assessed at, you know, $500,000, when it was $200,000 a couple of years ago, or two years ago, will still at some point sell for that amount of money, okay? Perhaps the taxes won't be affected right away. So I think we need to take this into the consideration. You know, the system is broken. We have a broken system here, in this country. We have a broken system here, within the state and the community. And, you know, I understand it takes legal matters to, you know, move these things forward, and to actually come to some conclusion, but, you know, at some point, you just have to ask, "What the fuck are we doing this for?" Like, sometimes you just have to push back against the system. If that makes any sense.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry, I just had a couple of things that struck me during the course of this, and I, I think it would be helpful to point some of it out, maybe. Anyway, to the, who shall be known as the government student, I think probably the reason, at least as I interpret it, and it was for me, that it took kind of so long for the wheels of this to kind of start moving. I mean, I think a lot of people were operating in good faith. Certainly, I would imagine the council, the mayor, had an expectation that GARR, you know, did some work and came up with these numbers. And, you know, like, I for one, think that a lot of property values in Hudson should go up. I mean, you know, there are buildings that are formally assessed at 100 grand, I mean, that's just absurd that it would be that low. And so, yeah, and I think there is truth to, you know, if you can kind of raise them all more or less, then everyone kind of pays the same amount of taxes, and it starts to reflect what things actually are, because as you pointed out, I think, you know, because otherwise you're disadvantaging the people who, maybe their house really is only worth 100 grand, and then you've got someone whose building is worth a million dollars, and that just doesn't make any sense if they're both paying the same tax. You know, so, but what ended up happening over the course of the last couple of months, and certainly for me, and it sounds like for a lot of people, you know, and I wanted to augment the point that you made, you know, I spoke to GARR for a couple of hours before my informal review, and, because I wanted to learn what it was, I understand that the burden of proof rests on the homeowner, or the building owner, or whatever, to dispute their assessment, to say, "Well, look, you know, you think it's a million-two, I think it's 650, these are my reasons," whatever. And so I asked GARR, "Could you please share with me the rationale by which you came to this number?" Which, you know, to give you my anecdote, was $1.2 million. And at first, they said they would furnish me with a document, but that it would be encoded in a way that I would not be able to understand. This is the truth, by the way. And so for those of you on the council who want evidence, this is really my story. I said, "Oh, well, okay." You know, I'm a pretty intelligent person, you know, at least compared to a stone, and if I, and I have some means, and so if I'm unable to comprehend this, you know, mystical, arcane document, I'll hire somebody to do it. After a small pause, the woman then said, "Well, actually, we don't really have a document that we can give you. You can talk to," his name is Barnett Barrett, something like that? Yeah, so you can talk to him, and I'll have him call you. And so he did. And I spoke to him for about an hour, and it was a very interesting conversation, but it certainly dispelled any good faith that I had left at that point. Over the course of the conversation, someone had mentioned an algorithm. I said, "Well, is there some kind of algorithm that you use to determine these values?" And he said, "Oh, I wish there were an algorithm, because then it would be like a science." And I said, "Oh, yeah, boy, that would be nice." And, and then I said, "Well, what did you use for comparables for my building, which is commercial?" And he said, "There are 19 comparables." And I said, "Well, so how are they different from the other commercial properties in Hudson?" "Oh, no, it's the same 19 comparables for every single commercial property in the city of Hudson." And I said, "Oh, okay." And then he went on to say, "I hate to say this to you, but the burden, I hate to say it to anyone, but the burden of proof is unfortunately on the homeowner." And I said, "Well, I'm okay with that, but all that I'm asking for is for you to explain to me how you got to my number, so that I can learn and figure out if maybe you got it right, maybe it is worth 1.2 million dollars." And as a, you know, a person who believes in paying their taxes, I'd be a fool to challenge that. And he said, "Yeah, I can't really give you anything more than those comparables. There's no algorithm, there's no explanation. It's just them, the same comparables that everybody has. The same comparables, I might add, that were used to determine that some properties that were sold a couple of years ago for one and a half million dollars, and then had enormous amounts of investment put into them, were then assessed at 1.4 million dollars. While my property, which sold about 10 years ago for 475, and has had no improvements, I didn't really see the need, went up to 1.2." You know, the point of me, my reasoning for making the statements earlier about how many people's properties went up, and how many went down, and how many, I guess, stayed more or less the same, was not just to frighten you that the people who went up are actually looking at increases greater than the increase in percentage-wise of their property, or to point out the obvious, which is that Hudson only pays part of the school tax for the district of Hudson, and so that's another number that's going to go up disproportionately. But to say that actually what we have are a set of data, these data are not good data, they're really laughable. And not only that, but GARR does not have any justification for it whatsoever, and which really means the city has no justification whatsoever. The city should not want these data, because these data are not useful. The city should not want to pay for these data, they should be rejected. And again, the matter of timing, if indeed the assessor, which I believe is the case, has not certified these results, and will not receive the final results until May 1st, this is the time, at the very least, I don't know what we can legally request, what you can legally request, but now is the time to say, "There are problems with these data." Extreme problems, not just people going up, that's a problem, those are problems. But there's people going down, there's people who aren't going up, they aren't going down. Why? Why do we know? There's Habitat for Humanity houses, as you mentioned, some of which went up from 100,000 to 300,000, some of which, right next door to one of those properties, identical, two identical houses, one goes up to 300, one stays more or less the same. No changes, no reason. GARR can't say anything about it. This is not, the problem with this is that to accept these data would be bad government, and that's not, I take it, what we're here for. And that is, again... And that is, again, presently what's going on is Gar is evaluating the results of these informal reviews. They are not going to change up any of the numbers that were too low. All they'll do is change down some of the numbers that people thought. And they are incentivized heavily to just do it, get it over with and get their check because right now they're waiting on what, approximately half of what they're due, the 150 grand. So they're gonna rubber stamp everyone's numbers, they're gonna negotiate with some people. Those of us who are lucky enough to have had an appraisal done, they'll probably just peg us at that number. Frankly, for my part, I'd be okay with that. It isn't about my assessment being too high. This is about what I learned about what Gar has given the city, and it's pathetic.
Tom?
Yeah, I just wanted to say for those, at least on the residential side, that have been struggling with getting together the preliminary grievance forms and potentially the grievance forms for the grievance day at the end of May. The GAS system right now, if you go to your property, there is a comparable button and you can sort for various properties for a various number of reasons and it will give you a much better list of comparables than the four comparables that Gar has provided to a lot of us. So there are resources out there, but perhaps the city needs to better connect the residents to those resources.
I was just gonna say too, the assessor called me last week and my understanding from what he said to me was that after everything is said and done, if you are not happy, he will, he will review things individually and, and make adjustments to what Gar has done. So we don't, we don't just end with where Gar decides.
No, no. The one that is the grievance process, which happens after that.
Right.
Yeah. And I think Justice Maxwell seems to be very agreeable.
No, no. Yeah, because he, he looked at my property at $300 a square foot and said, gee, I think at Fifth and Columbia. And he doesn't, you know, he's like, he didn't really even know the neighborhood, but he acknowledged. Yeah, anyway.
Well, it sounds like we have a budget of 150 grand. Maybe we could hire someone to work with him.
Well, the thing is like, we really don't have much time to, like, you know, take another meeting or something. We have to make a decision since like right now and we have to do something about that. So I have a small idea about like, if it is 100% price value going on from 2018 to 2019, 2018 was like a 77%. In a barrage of cities, residences, it go another 23% increase from 2018 to 2019, I believe. Nobody's hiding. It's my idea.
Did the assessor disclose his relationship with Gar? If that's the case, as we're getting into this contract? If the assessor worked for Gar, is that what I'm hearing? Was that disclosed? Did anyone?
I don't know. It was before any of us were in office, I believe. It was no?
It was always I.
That was the previous mayor and council.
I have a couple of questions for you, Tom, to Andy. Yes, I have a couple of questions. One is, is the 7-1 deadline for the assessment certified? Is that a New York State deadline? Okay. The assessments that they get May 1st, that's not a certified, that's a preliminary assessment? And then we, then from May 1st to May 28th, people will look at that and may go through the actual formal grievance process as opposed to the informal? And we don't know tonight what the ramifications are to Steve's point about walking away from the assessment, what that means, right? Is that?
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, the issue would be if the assessor walked away from the rule. Last year you had a 77% equalization rate. You know, you had a pretty robust real estate market last year. Ultimately, what they're going to do is they would take the, it gets a little wonky, but they would, they would take the assessed valuations on record, they would compare it to the sales and they would readjust that equalization rate. And I think the expectation is, is it would go below 77, you know, into the low 70s, perhaps into the high 60s. You know, that would be, that would be the immediate impact. And, you know, the farther you get away from 100%, the more it speaks of potential inequality where some people aren't being, you know, assessed where they should be. That's why that whole process is developed in the state. And that's not to take away anything, anyone that's selling any specific property. This is just from an abstract here.
So, so based on the timing that the preliminary assessment comes out May 1st, that the final certified assessment, whatever that final certified assessment is, happens on July 1st, we have an opportunity to have a special meeting as the council to discuss this and to discuss like the two, the cases that you've cited to make sure that we're, you know, we're doing everything, you know, appropriately based on the New York State Constitution and having whatever executive session that was brought up earlier, like we have that opportunity until when? Like what's that kind of drop dead date?
Well, I mean, you know, vis a vis the contract with Gar, you have plenty of time. I mean, because you can do that at any point. You could do that tonight, you could do that, you know, after the rules. Because you'd be alleging that there was a violation. I think the question you have here is the role itself, you know, and, you know, you want to see having that. And the problems are as identified. But again, that, ultimately that decision rests with the assessor on two points. One, you know, is, I mean, we can certainly alert him to the, to the public concern about specific properties and in general with the data collection. You know, and what is the position, his position vis a vis Gar and what they've provided to him. I'm not, I'm not commenting on it. That's, I'm just saying, that's where that decision has to be.
So my last comment, and I'm sorry, Tom, is are we as a, are we as a legislative body able to have a special meeting and request the assessor to come and we can present this to him so he can then, you know, have a more open dialogue? I mean, the person missing in the room obviously is the assessor. This is his jurisdiction.
That would seem more to happen, you want that to happen before May 1st or after May 1st?
Well, before we vote on a resolution, that we don't know what the ramifications and the end result is if we, you know, we're able to, I don't have enough information tonight.
How about if we put forward a resolution expressing a no confidence vote in Gar's data so that the assessor then knows where we stand in relation to moving forward?
Who hires and fires the assessor?
I presume the mayor. Certainly not.
So, you know, I'm just wondering what kind of pressure that might imply we're putting on, on the, on the assessor. Maybe the right amount, you know, maybe justified.
So are we, with the amendment suggestion that was made from the attorney and what you're saying, what are we going to do with this resolution tonight?
Well.
I don't know. I want to read it to the public because they know exactly what it says.
We can't hear you, Tiffany.
I'm sorry. I was asking, you know, with the suggestion that was made earlier from the city attorney of removing a certain line from the resolution. So I wanted to know, are we gonna move forward making that amendment change? Are we still gonna vote on it tonight? Or if the resolution would be read entirely to the public since you all are here rather than waiting till it's updoted?
So it's rather lengthy. Would you, does anyone want to introduce an amendment to this resolution first or do you want to consider this resolution as is?
Well, is there anything illegal? Andy, if we vote on this particular resolution tonight with the concerns that we heard from the public and making that amendment change, if we move forward?
I think Andy suggested that the first line should open us up to serious consequences.
Yeah, so I'm asking with the change, if it was made, is there anything illegal about us voting on this resolution tonight?
No.
So I would, you know, if we're done with questioning, I would make the motion to make that amendment change.
So the amendment, oh, you wanna, okay.
Nick, tell me.
Just want to make sure we got, we're eliminating from, in the first paragraph, from after the resolution authorizing the mayor, delete up until to terminate the city's contract with Gar and set forth herein.
And that is what the suggestion is, right? That was your suggestion?
That's the language.
Yeah, so would that, I would like to make that amendment.
Is there a second to the amendment? Well, got it first. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Can you plead for keep the amendment changes? A lot of talk is going on here.
Go to the first paragraph.
Right.
Except the first four, except, that is with an A, the first four words, resolution authorizing the mayor. Skip the next one, two, three and a half lines and then go to terminate the city's contract with Gar set forth herein. So that amends the resolution.
And would they have to still provide their output, their work? Would they, could, could doing this?
Yeah, I think this brands it.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a, that gets us with the amendment. Now I need an introduction and a second for the resolution. Tiffany and Sherida. And now we need a roll call vote.
Alvin, who, yeah?
I still feel that we're, we're not answering enough questions about our, about our community here and I think that we need to understand it more and I don't understand why we can't have a special meeting in order to discuss this more. And Tom, you brought up the fact that, you know, maybe having a new resolution and say we have no faith in Gar, I think everybody in this room can agree with that and probably would stand by this resolution, but getting this on Friday afternoon, the city attorney has, you know, hasn't vetted it for the city's protection, I just, I'm not in a place to be able to vote on this. I abstain.
Carriga?
Aye.
Halloran?
I abstain for the same reasons that the alderman, Leon abstains. I'd like to see us have an executive session and so that we can state very clearly.
Johnson?
How, so how long could it be for us to have a special meeting?
I think, I think we could talk about that afterwards, but that's not really something we, you know, we don't want to introduce some information while we're voting.
Lewis?
Aye.
Moriarty?
I think at this point, I'm not, I'm not really sure what this resolution, how this, you know, affects and protects the citizens in terms of what we're looking for. And I would rec, I mean, I would prefer this going a little farther to the legal side of it for some protections. So at this time, because some information that I still think is needed, I would abstain.
Nisan?
Aye.
Rosenthal?
I think, you know, a vote of no confidence is basically the same thing as saying you want to terminate the contract. I mean, you're just kind of punting the ball, so a bit of a favor of termination.
Sarr?
Aye.
Say aye.
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 Polo?
Um, yeah, I'd like to rather have the resolution, just have a vote of no confidence. But I am going to vote aye on this one.
Presenta Pietro.
I'll vote aye.
Your power?
Oh.
No, no, I'll vote aye.
Okay, but this leaves us, you know, with a problem and I think we still need a follow-up meeting quickly.
Can we, well, we can hear.
It passed.
It passed. Business here.
Oh, sorry.
We're not done.
That doesn't mean we still can't have this special meeting.
Right. And before we end tonight, we'll try to schedule that. We do have one more item of business and that is the law that is on your desk. As you know, it's a amendment, we talked about it informal, amending the city zoning code with regard to Austria's parking requirements of city. So can I have a motion and a, and a second to lay the proposed law on the aldermen's desks? Three lines, second. Now, may I have a motion and second to refer the law to the Columbia County Planning Board and Hudson Planning Board, which is required by law that we do that. Specifically provisions 239-1, 239-M, and the Hudson City Code 325-40. Can I have a?
Tom, can I ask you a question?
Oh, sure.
This one's legal, right? And then, oh, you backed last, I just, from last week's meeting, it was.
Right. Okay. Thank you. And there will be hearings and then, we get the advisory, I'm asking for a motion right now to get the advisory.
Letter.
Letters from the two planning councils. Do I have an introduction? John and Rob, second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. It's a long meeting, so let's try to schedule immediate follow-up meeting to go into this deeper with advice. Or do you want to have a little more time in between?
Can we request a second lawyer to look at it as well?
Sure we can. No offense, Dan.
Yeah, no offense. Please, why would we take offense?
Next. Next, was it next Wednesday? Give us enough time.
I'm just saying that I can, for emergency purposes, I can handle it. It's everybody's own notification.
So that's.
So as long as we can notify the press and I can have time to do the notices and handle it.
Somebody want to compose a time or?
Bring, talk about the 24th, huh?
I was thinking the 24th, yes.
So that's, there's just a legal meeting then?
Right, exactly.
Five o'clock?
Five o'clock on the 24th and that would be here. Can everybody make it?
When?
Wednesday, April 24th.
I'm going to be out of town.
Everybody else? Can you make it?
Yeah.
Everybody else make it?
Yeah.
You're out of town for a while or just that Monday?
No, I'm actually leaving on Wednesday, coming back on Saturday, but I can try to extend it because I'm dedicated to the city. I'll extend my vacation to try to leave on Thursday because that's how I roll.
Thank you, Donovan. Five o'clock, 24th, here. And I will see that, I don't know, everybody's prepared. I mean, go over this resolution. We didn't care for, come up with, you know, more questions and. I'm gonna skip new business tonight. I'm sorry, is there anything really pressing from the public?
Second, all in favor.